Okay for an old man.
He's an old man.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna call a meeting to order. First item is invocation by Chaplain Jerry Ferguson. And then it'll be followed by pledge of allegiance by Scott Stebbins.
You jump? I would like for my prayer tonight to be taken from Psalm 139. You have searched us, O Lord, and you know us. You know when we sit and when we rise. You perceive our faults from afar. You discern our going out and our lying down. You are familiar with all our ways. Search us, O God, and know our hearts. Test us and know our anxious thoughts. See if there is any offensive ways in us and lead us in the way everlasting. I offer this prayer in the name of our Redeemer. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Thank you, Scott. Next item is roll call. Diane?
Yes, good.
Present. Did that mic before's not working tonight?
So that means? Mayor Skook. Vice Mayor Nye is absent this evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman is absent this evening. Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next item is scheduled announcements and presentations. Chamber of Commerce, Marnie, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and is this working too?
No.
Although I don't really need it.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
It's working.
All right, I'll drop it back down a little bit, okay. Mayor and councilmembers, it's my pleasure to introduce one of our newest businesses in town along as a new chamber member. That is Ultra Water Bar Health Store, Vicki and Larry Johnston owners. If they would come up and introduce them and have them say a few words.
Thank you. Great to meet all you wonderful people. Thank you for having us.
Gonna put it down just a little bit.
Put it down a little bit for a little short me. There we go. This is my husband Larry Johnston, and we're so proud to be here in Prescott Valley, and we chose this location for a lot of good reasons. And our store is right at 8164 on Highway 69 here in town. And what we do is we sell water, ultra-clean water, the cleanest water technically on the planet, removes 170 of the worst contaminants in water, and we have a 15-gallon challenge, so you come in and we actually let you try the water for free. Sandy?
Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you for this opportunity, and I would like to take this opportunity for my own pleasure to thank the veterans and law enforcement that are here tonight.
Yeah. This is Cecilia Jurnigan. She's our office manager.
Hi, I want to thank you so much for having us here this evening. We are delighted to be here in Prescott Valley because this is where all the action is. So we're very excited to be on Robert Road in 69. I am going to pass out a card for each one of you. That's 15 gallons, a free, pure, clean, no contaminant card. Come into the store, get a gallon, and see how you feel. Thanks for having us here.
Thank you. And congratulations. Marnie, any other comments?
No, that's it. Just want to thank you all for this opportunity and also remind everybody the safe trick-or-treat sponsored by the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club, BROW, along with the Arizona Business League will be hosting at the Prescott Valley Event Center on Tuesday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 7:00. So everybody is invited to bring their boys and ghouls out to come out for oodles of trick-or-treat candy both inside and outside the event center. It's again another year of our partnership with them, and it's proven to be very successful. Obviously, we, I know the police department loves it because it gets a lot of the kids off the street into a safe environment where they can trick-or-treat among friends and family. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. Appreciate it.
And Marnie, where would you happen to be going this evening?
Oh, tonight I am attending the soft opening for Native Grill and Wings. They have a couple of different seating, so it's at 7:00. I'll be there in case anybody wants to come over and join me. But, so they're, we'll be doing their ribbon cutting on Monday at 10:30. So Native Grill and Wings opening up right there in the crossroads, and we're excited to have them as a new business and will. I think they were introduced last meeting by Brady, but again, excited that they're opening and again contributing to the economy and another place to dine and enjoy in Prescott Valley.
I'll give them a special congratulations.
I will, and I hope everybody will be there for the ribbon cutting on Monday to really show them some Prescott Valley love, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. Okay, next we have another very special announcement. West Yavapai Guidance Clinic, Larry Green, CEO. Larry, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Larry Green, Chief Executive Officer of the West Yavapai Guidance Clinic. Just to give you a little bit of a refresher, we're an organization that's served this community since 1966. We're licensed and nationally accredited. We have 11 locations. We have nearly 400 employees, and we serve over 7,000 people annually. I'm here tonight to give you a little bit of an update about one of our new programs here in Prescott Valley, our Crisis Stabilization Unit, what I have referred to across the communities that we serve as the missing link. As you likely know, we operate a Level 1 psychiatric stabilization hospital in Prescott Valley as well as other outpatient programs in Prescott, Prescott Valley. We serve Chino Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, and all of western Yavapai County. Crisis Stabilization Unit is at 8655 East Ridge Drive, right behind Tractor Supply here in Prescott Valley, and it was opened officially June 21st of 2017. We've invested as an organization nearly $2 million in this facility. For some of you that may not be aware, it was previously the Copper State Nut and Bolt Company, and we built that facility out for a crisis stabilization unit which includes 10 23-hour, 59-minute crisis stabilization chairs as well as eight additional subacute level beds in addition to our Level 1 hospital beds in Prescott Valley. I've referred to it as the missing link because this program is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is our first and only 24/7 access point where somebody can walk in, get themselves enrolled, get themselves worked through a crisis situation, and this has been really a two-year journey that's involved a number of law enforcement coalitions and community partners, of which Prescott Valley is one, and we appreciate that. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of how the program is going. The purpose of the program is jail and emergency department diversion, so meaning we'd like to keep folks in mental health crisis out of jail if at all possible. It is not the place for them generally, and we'd like to keep them out of the emergency department, which is the highest level, highest cost care, and that's not where they need to be either. So since June 21st, the opening, we've had 82 individuals that have been dropped off by regional law enforcement to include Prescott Valley, Yavapai County Sheriff, Prescott, and Chino Valley. And this is also open to the region, so 82 people that have been diverted either from the emergency department or from jail. As of September 30th or through September 30th, we've had a total of 665 people. So that's less than 90 days, 665 people through our front door. And our front door is licensed outpatient, and we have, we have crisis assessors available, and we're now very excited to say we have paramedics that are working on the front end of our outpatient to assess medical acuity. And the partnership with Yavapai Regional Medical Center, they actually provide supervision for the paramedics who are our employees. So we've had, we've had drop-offs by ambulance that are assessed then by our paramedics to ensure that we're within the scope of practice at our crisis stabilization unit. So I'm very excited to tell you that in the month of September, YRMC, Yavapai Regional Medical Center experienced a 30% decrease in mental health patients in the emergency department. This has been, as I mentioned, a partnership. You might be wondering, why would somebody come to the crisis stabilization unit? It could be they're thinking about harming themselves. It could be that they're thinking about harming someone else. It could be for detox, either for alcohol or opiates or, or other issues. We've seen an increase in family referrals, folks that just show up that are asking for advice as to how to deal with a family situation. It could be just suicidality, or they're, they're not dealing very well with a situation that happens within daily life. So you might be asking, how can the community help? Please spread the word. We have capacity yet available in our crisis stabilization chairs. I will tell you that the beds have been full nearly from the first week, but we still have capacity on the outpatient side. Crisis assessors are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You might also be wondering how the community can help. We're a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. Tax credit donations, if you're individual, $400. If you're married, filing jointly, $800 to an agency like ours. So with that, I'm open for any questions, but I appreciate the opportunity, also the partnership from Prescott Valley. We're in the process of applying for some rebates that you were supportive of through the initial development of that program, and, and we're very much appreciative of that.
Good. Any questions, anyone? Comments? Mike?
Yeah, I was just curious, how many of the patients you see are considered veterans? Do you track that at all?
We do. Councilmember Whiting, I did not bring that number. That's very important to us. We do work along with the VA. It's very important to me as a veteran as well. I did not bring that number, but some of the folks that we serve throughout all of our programs can and have been veterans of the military.
There's also just one other question. You're basically dependent upon the community in terms of support because there's not, I don't think, a lot of fee for service, and I think it is a real eye-opener to see the reduction at YRMC in terms of, you know, how they have to deal with the services they provide that may or may not be supported, and I assume you're kind of in the same situation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Whiting, we do have, we do have fund sources available, so if somebody comes into the crisis stabilization unit, there's no charge for that service. There is, for some levels of care that we have, there are charges and there are eligibility requirements. However, for crisis stabilization services, there, there are no charges. That answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Mary, question?
Oh, I was just gonna say I was there the day that you did cut the ribbon for that facility, and it's very uplifting, and you've done a lot of work just in a very short amount of time. So the contribution and the partnership is just tremendous. It's helping the community. So thank you. Thank you. I know how much your heart is in this. I heard your story.
Thank you very much. And also a special thank you to the Prescott Valley Police Department. They have been with us every step of the way. The chief and the force, Lieutenant Stebbins, he was on the initial planning committee for law enforcement that helped us put together all of the policies, procedures, protocols, and it's, it's been a community effort as it has in fact taken the village to put this together. So thank you very much.
Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Larry, I just want to thank you as well. I know one of the primary areas that you focus on is mental health. It's something that's dear to my heart. For any families that have had this touch their family, they know what that means, and it takes caring professionals to help those families, and I want to thank you.
Rick? Larry, I think you're doing a super job, and thank you for the whole agency. Appreciate it.
We appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, we have another one. That's introduction of new PBPD employee. Chief?
They're not coming up to you. They're shy.
Step stool. Okay, guys, come on up here. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So as you know, I like to bring new employees from the police department, not only before council so that you can get to know them, but also so that the, the community learns a little bit about them and gets to, gets to know them as well. So this is the first round. We're gonna have another, I believe, four at the next regular council meeting in two weeks. These are the, the product of the half-cent sales tax increase that went into effect in January of 16. In July of 16, we were able to hire eight additional officers in addition to the ones that we had vacancies for, and so this, this is the fruit of that, and I, and I gotta tell you, we couldn't have picked better people, as you'll see in a minute. So I want to just go through a quick introduction of all of them. So we'll start on your left. Jasper Dampier. Jasper was raised in California on his farm, uh, family's almond ranch. After high school, he married his wife Jessica and then joined the Army Reserves where he continues to serve today. He joined the Prescott Valley Police Department in July of 16, and graduated from Class 41 of NARDA. Jasper is finishing up his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Columbia College and will then pursue a master's in criminal justice management. In his spare time, he likes doing outdoor activities and spending time with his wife. He looks forward to continuing his career in law enforcement and serving the people. That's Jasper Dampier. Cameron Kinsey. Cameron is 23 years old and was born and raised in Prescott Valley, so it's a homegrown young man. He joined the Prescott Valley Police Department in July of 16, also graduating from Class 41. He is currently attending the International Science and Sports Association where he's getting his personal trainer certificate. His favorite activities include anything outdoors, sports, and weightlifting. That's Cameron Kinsey. Shailene Elens. I hope I said that right. Shailene was born, I'll take it that was a no. Shailene was born in North Carolina but was raised in Prescott and Prescott Valley starting at the age of two months. She graduated from the University of Phoenix with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and is a certified phlebotomist. If you know what that is, you'll get the next part of it. She prefers to think of herself as a vampire. Shailene joined the Prescott Valley Police Department also in July of 16, and she continued to fight for top academic honors in NARDA Class 41, and she finished number two overall in the class. She is the proud mother of eight-year-old Isabella, who I believe is here tonight, and in her spare time, she enjoys music, volleyball, reading, and above all, her friends and family. That's Shailene, and I won't say the last name. Kenny Cease. Kenny joined the department again in July of 16. He says he is honored to be a member of the Prescott Valley Police Department and is extremely enthusiastic about his career and where it will take him in the future, and I can tell you that we're extremely enthusiastic about him being here. In his spare time, Kenny enjoys spending time with his family, and he likes to fish. Now, he provided a fun fact, and he has a, an interesting colorful nickname in the police department, which I'm not gonna say the whole thing right here, but a variation of it would be "Darn it, Kenny." So if you ever see him out and about, you can ask him what that means. Garrett Shook, last but not least. Garrett joined the police department in July of 16. He has said that through a combination of life experiences, he developed a desire to make a positive impact on those around him and facilitate change for the better. He says that he was fortunate to be given the opportunity to do these things with the Prescott Valley Police Department and became a sworn officer after graduating from NARDA 41. He wants you to know that an interesting fact about him is that his favorite breakfast cereal is Cookie Crisp, and who said they weren't kids? So that's you, half of your new employees, and we'll bring the, the rest of them back to you at a later date. Thank you.
Any of these people wish to comment, do you think?
I don't know, do they? Anyone want to say anything? People of action, not words. What can I say?
People of few words.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And congratulations, and thank you. Okay, next we have proclamations. I think Diane has the proclamations. Rick and I'll meet down there. And I, I don't know who's gonna take the towns proclamation. Maybe Marnie, are you gonna do it, Marnie? Cities and Towns Week?
Sure.
Just say yes. Just say yes. Yes, good idea, yeah.
You want Marnie to read it?
Arizona Cities and Towns Week, October the 15th through the 21st of 2017. Whereas the citizens of the town of Prescott Valley rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreation programs. And whereas it's important for the town of Prescott Valley to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community, and whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the town of Prescott Valley to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the town of Prescott Valley can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. And therefore, be it resolved that the town of Prescott Valley joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October the 15th through 21st of 2017 as Arizona Cities and Towns Week.
Rick, any comments?
While it may not have been obvious why we chose Marnie to come up here tonight, Marnie certainly does as much for our town as any
Marnie certainly does as much for our town as anybody possibly could, certainly as much as we do. So thank you for being here tonight to accept this.
Marnie, your comments in your defense?
I'm kind of speechless, but no. It's actually, what a beautiful and wonderful community we live in, and it makes it very easy when you have a Chamber of Commerce that's dedicated to business development, quality of life, and supporting a town, to work with ours here, and truly to be known as leaders in the state. And I know that when you attend the League of Cities and Towns every year, that you are recognized, as is all our council, as leaders moving forward in a way that many think about, and we do it. So, thank you. It's my pleasure to be a part of it.
I think Larry has a comment.
No, that's the first time.
Marnie, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And yes, we've, we do get a lot of recognition from other communities. Thankfully, we're in solid financial shape, have a low, very low crime rate, thanks to our good Police Department. Our roads and streets are, thanks to our Public Works, getting up to speed, and there's been a heavy traffic uptake, so they, they really have their work cut out. They're doing a good job. Everybody's doing a good job, and we appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that's for you, Marnie.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more. Manufacturers Month. Mike Daly, Prescott Aerospace, you got the...
Manufacturers Month, October the 2017. Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of the economy, providing a sustainable foundation for a resilient economy, and providing opportunities for families of all ages, and whereas manufacturers play a vital role in our statewide and local economy by creating jobs and producing innovative products with a local and a global demand. And whereas manufacturing presents significant potential for high-wage employment, offering various career opportunities for skilled and highly skilled workers, and whereas manufacturing affords the opportunity to increase exports, bringing dollars into the region and creating economic vitality. And whereas Arizona is home to more than 4,500 manufacturers, employing more than 150,000, 55,000 people, and exporting globally close to $20 million annually. And whereas the town of Prescott Valley recognizes and celebrates manufacturers as a vital contributor to the local economy and the well-being of this community, now therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Manufacturers Month.
Thank you, Diane. Comments, Rick?
Well, you can see how important manufacturers are. The town gets a week and you get a month. So, but we thank you for everything that you bring to our town, you and the rest of the manufacturers, as, as well, of course, as all of our retailers. But we do appreciate everything you do, Mike, and we're grateful.
You get a month, Father's Day gets a day. And, oh, she wants to take a picture with Mike. You'll have to move over. I think I, we've had the opportunity to tour Mike's plant. It's called Prescott Aerospace. How long you been in business, Mike?
Been in Prescott Valley since 1983.
Nineteen eighty-three. Got a huge shop, all modern machines, make some very special parts, and I guess that tolerance has to be about zero, has to be perfect. Mike, you wanna tell us about yourself?
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. Basically, I just want to represent all the manufacturers in Prescott Valley. There's several of us around here. We employ several hundred people, and we basically chose this area because we like the, the climate, the area, the support we get from the town and staff. I've built basically three buildings in Prescott Valley, and got tremendous support through the planning and zoning, so that's why I'm here. I enjoy being where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I think it's important to know that Prescott Valley, I believe it's in, about 16,000 people work here in Prescott Valley, and of course, a, a certain number of them work in manufacturing. So congratulations, Mike, and thank you all. Okay, next, we have some certificates of appreciation. Kenny Bowman, for fifteen years of service. Ken?
Diane, do you have any comments?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Norm Davis, do you have any comments, or anybody?
Kenny Bowman, fifteen years of working with the city, town of Prescott Valley. Wow. Kenny and his wife Sheri and son Travis have been residents of Prescott Valley since 1990. Kenny attended and graduated high school in Prescott. Kenny and his wife Sheri have a love for animals and have at times cared for many dogs. To this day, they still have and care for alpacas. They also have a love for the outdoor life, where they enjoy hunting, camping, kayaking, and all our other great town and surrounding areas have to offer. It is now time to celebrate Kenny's fifteen years of service. Be starting with, before starting with the town of Prescott Valley, Kenny spent many years as a plumber. Probably one of the things Kenny wishes we didn't know about him, because every time we have a plumbing problem at the shop or in the field, guess who gets the call? You got it right, Kenny. Kenny started his employment with the town's street department as the town's first fleet advisor, where he spent two years assisting all town departments in obtaining quotes and setting up appointments for the repair and preventative maintenance of the town's fleet. After two years as fleet advisor, Kenny decided he wanted to become more involved in the day-to-day operations of the streets department. When the opportunity became available for a laborer position, Kenny transferred to the streets department and started learning the many responsibilities of a street department's staff member. After a few years as a laborer and obtaining a Class B commercial driver's license, Kenny was promoted to a maintenance tech position. As a maintenance tech, Kenny is responsible for the operation of large equipment and taking a lead role in the maintenance and repair of town infrastructure to include drainage maintenance, street light maintenance, sign maintenance, assisting with traffic signal maintenance, assisting with barricading for traffic accidents and special events, preparation and working special events, and operating snow plows during snow events. Over the last two years, Kenny has been very involved in assisting with the pre-ship patching program and all other duties as required. During his fifteen years with the town of Prescott Valley, Kenny has worked a lot of monsoon and storm events, been involved in many special projects, formed many friendships, and has gained the trust and the respect of his coworkers and supervisors. He considers, continues to assist in the operation and overall success of the Public Works Department, improving and taking care of our great community. Thank you, Kenny, and congratulations.
Thank you, Diane. Rick, any comments?
I just want to thank you for fifteen years. That's, that's a long time, and you've worked really hard, and, and I certainly do appreciate. Thank you very much.
Mary?
Yes, I want to thank you too, and I know some of your special projects include the healing field that you and the whole department does a tremendous amount of work for, and I truly appreciate all of that from the bottom of my heart. So, thank you for your service and looking forward to another twenty, thirty years or so.
Jody?
Well, Kenny, I brought my orange jacket, because I just want to tell you that I have a special place in my heart for Public Works. And today, with you having fifteen years in, you've gone through a lot, and I want you to know I understand that, and I thank you for it. Thank you, sir.
Mike?
Yeah, we do appreciate your fifteen years of service. I think that's something I always enjoy to see, is our employees work themselves into a position of responsibility, and obviously, you're multifaceted. I think the, the whole department, as far as Public Works, is multifaceted. Everything you do touches our community one way or another, and that's good and sometimes bad, I don't know. But we appreciate, appreciate you very much, and we love your cheering section as well, and hard to miss out in the field, and that's why we like those orange shirts. So, been, congratulations for your fifteen years.
You guys are doing a super job. You wanna, can you make some comments?
I'm not, I'm not much for talking.
Twenty minutes, by the way.
I, I can't do that. About twenty seconds. I just wanted to thank you guys for having me here, and enjoy being here, and look forward to a few more years.
Okay, we have an appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Kenneth Bowman for, in appreciation for fifteen years of dedicated service, August 2002 through August 2017. And we have a gift that'll be included in your next paycheck, and your pin with two emeralds, and your box.
Ken, thank you again. We really appreciate that. Keep up the good work, and thank, thank all your coworkers. You're doing a great job. Next, we have a certificate of appreciation to Ron Houseley.
Where'd it go?
For service on the Building Board of Appeals. Is Ron here? If he is, I'm...
Yeah, right here.
There he is. There you are. Good to see you. Diane, do you have any comments?
Actually, I do not, Mayor.
You do not, huh?
Rick? Tell us about your time on the Building Board of Appeals.
Well, in the, the three years that I was on the board, we only had one issue come up, so that's the great news, and that's kind of indicative of all the experience that I've had with, with the town. I can tell you, I live over in that other place to the west now, and there's not many days go by I don't miss working with you guys, and Larry, and Richard, and Woody. Building here in, in the town was just terrific, and so, and I appreciate the opportunity to be on the board. I'm glad I didn't have to do anymore. It was great, so.
Did I pronounce your last name right, Houseley?
Well, I do. I just want to, I know we thanked you when you volunteered to come on the board originally, but I want to thank you again from the council for stepping up and being willing to participate on the board, even though there wasn't a lot of participation. You were willing to be there when we would need you, and that's important to us. It makes our jobs a lot easier, knowing that we have citizens that are willing to step up and do that, so thank you very much.
I've told Richard too, that just because I'm gone, I'm a phone call away, anything I can ever do for the town, I'm always here. So, we love this town, we love all you guys, and we appreciate you. So, you got that on record. Call me anytime you need me.
Mike?
Yeah, we do want to congratulate you, Ron, and we do want to mention as well that if, if you feel as though you'd like to contribute still to the community or to Prescott Valley, we have other vacancies available as well. So don't feel as though we don't want to see you again, but we appreciate all your hard work, and you never know, I think, in terms of your participation on a board, do you know what it's going to be like, and some are busier than others. And I remember when I got in planning and zoning, they very rarely had a lot of work, but as soon as I got on, it was very constant. So, I know it's something that you have to do your homework and study for regardless of what's going on, and we appreciate your commitment and willingness to do that, and we do hope to see you around the town center.
Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ron, thank you so much for taking the time, because you had made a choice. You could have done other things, but you chose to serve, and that's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Mary?
Yes, Ron, thank you, 'cause without citizens like you that are willing to come forward and do this volunteer service, we wouldn't be able to get the things done that we need to. It's definitely a community, and we need each other to get everything done that's required. So, thank you very much. We look forward to having you here anytime.
Good, thank you, Mary. Our town has run very well, thanks to good people like you. Any, any other comments?
You've done a great job, and I'm, I'm happy that you're gonna get to retire, but we're certainly gonna miss you.
Thank you, and keep up the good work, and I hope you can help the other town do as well as we've done. Right, Ron?
So we have an appreciation award from the town of Prescott Valley, presented to Ron Houseley, in appreciation for dedicated service on the Building Board of Appeals, April 2014 through April 2017. And thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate that real much, Ron. Next is comments communication. Counsel, have any comments, anyone? Next, we go to the consent agenda, and Councilmember Whiting will be reading that.
Item nine on the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council, and they will be enacted by one motion only. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, and will be considered separately for discussion and/or possible action. Number A, approving the council minutes, September fourteen and twenty-eight, 2017, council minutes, September seven and twenty-first, 2017, work-study minutes, and September twenty-eight, 2017, executive minutes. Approving, B, approving the routine destruction of records. C, approving revisionary plat, RP seventeen zero, zero eight, Joe and Deborah Wright's Trust, combining lots six-six-one-eight and six-six-one-eight-A, located at eight, eighty-two-eighty East Long Mesa Drive. D, approving the board and commission selection committee, September fifteen, 2017, minutes. Approving, E, approving a recommendation of approval of new Series Twelve restaurant liquor licenses for Casa Perez Restaurant, located at thirty-eighty-eight North Glassford Hill Road, Suite Three, Jose D. Sanchez Diaz, agent. F, approving a recommendation of approval of a temporary extension of premises, patio permit for the Prescott Valley Events Center, located at thirty-two-oh-one North Main Street, Jeffrey Wazowitz, applicant. Approving, G, approving a recommendation of approval of a new Series Twelve restaurant liquor license, and interim permit of Pizza Hut, located at seven-four-three-zero East Pavway, Teresa J. Morse, agent. H, authorizing the mayor to sign an Arizona State Purchasing Cooperative Agreement between the Arizona Department of Administration, State Procurement Office, and the town of Prescott Valley. I, approving a budget transfer from the Police Patrol Capital Budget to Police Patrol Operating Budget Line item to purchase portable radios. J, approving a budget transfer from the capital account to the operations account for the Police Department roof repairs in the amount of $4,308. K, approving the amendment to the town engineer agreement in the amount of up to $23,070 and change order number four for a decrease to the construction contract with Earth Resources Corporation in the amount of $32,710.37, parentheses, CIP-S379. L, accepting a Prescott East sanitary sewer easement in Castle Canyon Mesa Lot Five-seventy-six, Unit Four, APN-one-oh-three-dash-oh-three-dash-five-seven-six, from Yavapai County. And M, accounts payable.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone want to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a whole? Anybody else wanna...
Mayor, make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the consent agenda as a whole, by electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? It passes, thank you. Okay, we go into the old business for action.
Okay, we go into the old business for action. Second reading of ordinance number 833, adopting by reference that certain public record amendments to Article 10-405 Alarm Systems. With that, I would ask you, Diane, if you would read ordinance number 833, adopting by reference that certain public record amendments to Article 10-05 Alarm Systems. Diane?
Ordinance number 833, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending Chapter 10 offenses, Article 10-05 Alarm Systems of the Prescott Valley Town Code by adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Article 10-05 Alarm Systems, declared by Resolution Number 2012 to be a public record, which provides that the alarm company operators verify that burglar alarms are not false alarms prior to requesting law enforcement response, imposing a civil sanction for any unified, unverified, excuse me, alarms reported as verified alarms, providing that application and enforcement of the new Section 10-05-035 verified alarms response shall be on and after July 1st, January 1st, 2018, providing that all other chapters and articles and sections of the town code not herein repealed, renacted, or amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. Next question, shall this ordinance pass? Would I set the vote, Diane?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Rooney, do you wish to vote?
I hit abstain.
I hit abstain. Okay. That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We'll move on to 10B. Second reading of ordinance number 834, approving amendments to Chapter 4 Police Department Town Code. Uh, with that, I'd again ask you to read ordinance number 834 by title only for a second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 834, an ordinance of the mayor and the common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the Section 4-01-040 Departmental Rules and Regulations in Article 4-01 Police Department in Chapter 4 Police Department of the Town Code to designate the high-risk policies to conform to a new Prescott Valley Police Department Policy Manual to be adopted and amended by council action, providing that all other chapters, articles, and section of the town code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, Diane. With that, I'll ask, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote, Diane?
Yes, Mayor. That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. We move on to number 11, no business for review, comment, and/or possible action. 11A is consideration of authorizing the mayor to read Resolution Number 2020, 2023, adopting and approving a final development plot plan, TFD P 17-012 for Granville, Unit 10C. Joe?
Joe, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a final development plan for Unit 10C of Granville, comprising additional 150 lots, bringing the total to about 2,400. Again, with this uh, uh, final development plan, there's no subdivision agreement because all of the public improvements have already been installed and inspected. So, uh, with that, I recommend approval. And Joe Contadino's not here tonight because he's doing some relief work with his church down in Mexico City, but sends his regards.
Good. Any questions, anyone? Anything special besides the picture we've uh, you had a pretty good report here, which we appreciate.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just make a note, again, this map shows the future community center and that's been to the commission as a preliminary development plan that will be coming forward to council shortly here.
Good. Mary, you had a question?
No, no, not at all. No question.
Anyone else got any questions? Joel, thank you. Any comments, questions, motions, commotions, demotions, promotions?
Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor and his absence the vice mayor to sign Resolution Number 2023, adopting and approving a final development plan plat, FDP 17-012 for Granville, Unit 10C.
Mayor, I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
That's approved unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on into number 11B. Consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 2013, approving and adopting the high-risk PB PD policies. Chief, you got any comments? All that paper?
Yeah.
Know everybody read it at least twice.
It's starting to feel like everybody's taller than me. Maybe that's why I'm feeling that way. No, just these, I hope you had good reading on all these policies. Just to reiterate my point from last week or whenever it was, two weeks ago, um, this process, there's already some of these, for example, the use of force policy, that we're already identifying some changes, so we'll be bringing those back to the council again in the near future. Very near future. That's all I have.
Questions, anyone? It looked to me like a good policy, but believe me, to know it good would take a lot of study.
Yeah, so, just to, to refresh everybody, what we did was we contracted with an outside organization that specializes in the development of police policies in, with risk management in mind. So, they have, uh, they're based in California, but they have representatives, subject matter experts throughout Arizona who help develop Arizona policy. They develop a, a model policy, if you will. They send it to us. We look at it and then we make certain modifications to make it unique to Prescott Valley. When we do that, we send it to the appropriate entity that then check it, make sure it's good. It could be Human Resources, Legal Department. In fact, I think the Legal Department gets all of them and they put their stamp of approval on it and then we bring it to you.
Any other comments? Mike?
Yeah, I was just curious. I was reading an article in the paper the other day and this is not uncommon to utilize an app, outside resource as far as development of the policies.
No, Lexipol, the company was founded and based in California and there aren't, I'd say there's probably close to a majority of agencies in California that use this company. It is really good. I could give you a long history of the gentleman who founded the company, but he's right on target, one of the best in the field. And so, now they're branching out to other states, but they don't, they don't try to force California policy in other states. They, they establish subject matter experts in those states because there's certain laws like SB 1070 for Arizona, the immigration law. So, they have to make sure that they incorporate anything specific to a state in their policies for that state. And they are very, very good.
Rick? No comment? Any other questions, comments? Anything else, Chief?
No, sir.
Mike?
Well, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to authorize the mayor and his absence the vice mayor to sign Resolution 2013, approving and adopting the high-risk Prescott Valley Police Department Policies.
Second, anyone?
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
That carries unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we're gonna see. Consideration of awarding a contract for the installation of hot melt crack seal materials for the fiscal year 2017-18 to CBJ Asphalt and Concrete Contractors LLC in the amount of $27,000. Norm?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. This may look a little familiar to you. This is the time of year we bring the crack seal labor award to you. Crack seal is one of the pavement treatments we do for Prescott Valley roadways as part of our half-cent supercharge enhancement of pavement roadways. So, council may recall here back in September 14th, we awarded the purchase of the materials. That's already been delivered, it's sitting in the yard, got here a week or two ago. So, what this is for is the contractors to apply the crack seal to the streets. What you're seeing here is on, actually on the town website, uh, council may recall that we've got this cycle of the roads that need to be done. So, this is on the website. This is actually part of the contract. These roads will be crack sealed in anticipation of crack sealing this fall and the next summer they will perform that final chip seal layer. So, this is on the website, this is what the contractor bid. We did have great competition from contractors, had actually seven contractors bid. You see CBJ Asphalt, they actually did the contract for us last year, very good contractor, do great work, we're very pleased with our bids we received, especially with the good competition you, you see there. Did want to point out to council that we do apply crack seal this time of year, obviously with the shrinking of, asphaltic pavements are flexible, so this is the best time of year to perform the work. That's why we do it very methodically this, this time of year. And with your consideration for award, we'd get started within the next couple of weeks and basically we can do one truckload on the, on the streets you see here. Just a little bit for council, this is actually a crack seal operation in the past that's being performed. You can see just for the audience or your own refresher memory of what the work looks like. In the past, I brought the little blocks of elastomeric asphalt in, didn't bring one tonight, but that's sitting waiting, of course. You heat it up in the, the hot kettle and you apply it hot and when it cools down, it actually fills the crack and keeps water from infiltrating into your pavement, which actually degrades your pavement. So, one of the maintenance treatments we performed prior. As always, what's very important to us, this does get performed in, not only in the residential areas, but also commercial. Uh, the outreach is very important to us to make sure people know what to expect from the operation. Crack seal doesn't really affect traffic all that much or really any impact to residential business, but we do let them know that contractors, phone numbers there, in addition to our own town staff monitoring the project, we always stay in close contact with our residents and business owners to make sure they know what to expect and why we're doing the work. Obviously, all good stuff that we're maintaining our pavements. The SAS exhibit just wanted to show was, talked about, we've completed, this is year two, so actually we've updated the um, history map to show what streets have been done. As you can see, we talked about with the infusion of $2 million a year, two years of, of um, maintenance drop off when we start catching up every couple of years, uh, per year, we actually have a program. The new red color is all the chip seal was done this year. As you can see, we've populated the map with all the work that was done this past year. What we do like to point out is, what's interesting to see on this map is there's still one road left that's left in black and that road, how come it wasn't done may be a question because the pink and black colors dropped off. Well, one road was left off, that's actually Yavapai Road, that's actually our candidate we would like to recommend next, next year for an overlay. As we talked about, um, we're in year two, so not every road gets done, but really wanted to show the reason this didn't drop off, we don't spend any money on it in its condition. We'll do a rehab next year, so we don't ever spend any money, don't have to. So, these GIS exhibits are very, very beneficial to not only how we plan, but make sure we spend our money effectively and always have a common plan in place. That is um, transparent to the public, so I was on the website and when they expect a road to be getting on to where their particular program is at in its particular state at this point in time. With that, we have to answer any questions about crack seal or even the maintenance program.
Questions, anyone?
No, sir.
No?
But Mayor?
Yeah, Jody?
I'd like to make a comment if it's all right.
By all means.
You know, Norm, this is one of the things that people see it. You know, we're always asking, where's our money going? I mean, this is real clear. I might not be sexy, but we see it and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Good. Any other comments? Um, you guys are making good progress on the roads. You've got a lot, ways to go yet, but I think you're moving right up there, so appreciate that.
As we mentioned, we're finishing up year two here and we're looking forward to continuing to move forward into year five and actually catching up as we've talked about initially.
Good. Mary? Mike?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention too that the, the way in which we apply both the chip seal, crack seal are pretty much standard in terms of the industry. And I think sometimes folks think that we're doing our own thing and our own style, but uh, as far as I know, and I'd like to have your input, that we're doing the standard in terms of how it's applied around the country.
Yeah, I would, I would comment, this is, you know, pavement maintenance 101. We have great partnerships with the contract community, let's call it the techno community. We go to conferences, we find out what products are out there. Actually, the reason I brought some of that crack seal, it is particularly an injured earth product, it's elastomeric asphalt, it's not just hot tar, that it's got a lot of technology and that's why it performs so well to seal the cracks. So, to the point, yes, um, it's an industry standard what we do, all these contractors are well qualified and they know what, what to expect and we get the best value that way too.
Good. Mary?
No, sir.
Jody had a comment?
If there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion though, Mayor.
Think we're ready. No other questions?
Very good, Mayor.
All right. I make a motion to award a contract for the installation of hot melt crack seal materials for the fiscal year 2017, 2018 to CBJ Asphalt and Concrete Contractors LLC for the contract amount of $27,000.
I'll second that.
Give the motion and a second, would you set the vote first, Diane?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Go for it. Okay, we're gonna go on to the comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public, those who are wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks should be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make some comments? Mr. Ferguson, Chaplin, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as the department representative who sets up the Coffee with the Cop, I want to say thank you for your response to those. We're into our 16th month now and it will be this coming Tuesday at Step 1 and you're all invited to that, but I simply want to say thank you for your participation in that program. We look forward to seeing you there.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Debbie? You'll have to use the microphone. It doesn't go over TV, to our TV audience, if you don't use the microphone. And it doesn't go on tape.
No one gets away without using the microphone.
Mayor and staff and council, I hear about roads almost every day. What are we doing, where are we going and why, why not? So, thank you for this report and I'm glad I came tonight because every time I do come, I learn something more and you have to be here to, to hear this for yourself, but I'm real proud that I can go out into the community and answer questions and be a good citizen and give back. So, thank you. Um, it's a great community, once and for all. I'm so proud to be here. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Debbie Kirk, any comments? Any other comments? If not, we have one more item that I know everybody hates and that would be a motion to adjourn. Anyone want to adjourn or do you want to continue?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second, anyone?
I'll second that.
That survived. Would you set the vote, Diane?
That's unanimous, Mayor.
That's it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Jerry, we appreciate-